County Commissioners Cruz.
Here.
Duffy, Gallo.
Here.
James, Lapur.
Here.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Here.
Director Bartlett.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted at the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk, posted in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of law.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Mr. Cruz, would you lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Our moment of silence is, as always, for all members of the United States Armed Forces who have died while serving abroad, as well as all those who have died from the COVID-19 pandemic, particularly the 2,300 residents of Passaic County. I would also add, those of you who noticed that last Wednesday and Thursday, our Passaic County flags were at half-staff, that was in memory of former county freeholder and Assemblyman Peter Eglar, so please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. This would ordinarily be the part of the meeting where we pause for an invocation. We actually have a member of our Bengali community, Imam of Masjid Adam, on his way to join us as part of our Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. But since Father Ryan is here, finish my sentence for me, Lou. Please rise again as you're able for Father Patrick Ryan.
I love executive decisions. Do you praise? Today we welcome, and especially all the Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander heritage people who are here tonight, who grace us with your presence. I wanted to just hold up to God the commissioners and the staff who were instrumental in bringing about the Vietnamese Memorial Wall. It was absolutely spectacular, and I don't use that word ever. It was great, you know? So we remember too, all of those men and women who, since we're talking about the wall, who gave their lives for their country. God, hold them up and keep them close to you. Keep everyone here in your presence, close to you. Never allow us to forget how much you love us, care for us, and want us to be well. We ask this as we ask all things Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Father Ryan. So we're going to do a little bit of business, and then we're going to move on to the special highlights of our program. First, can I have a motion for approval of the minutes of our prime meeting?
Make that motion.
Second.
Made by Duffy, seconded by Lapur. Roll call, Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Duffy.
Yes.
Commissioner Gallo.
Yes.
Commissioner James. Commissioner Lapur.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes, I have a motion to approve the proclamation, G1 through G8.
Make that motion.
Second.
Made by Cruz, seconded by Lazara. Roll call, Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Duffy.
Yes.
Commissioner Gallo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lapur.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
And that brings us to the administrator's report. Matthew.
Thank you, Director. First, this evening, we have Commissioner Cruz presenting a proclamation to Estherina Karini for her retirement from the Passaic County Clerk's Office of Records. We also have our county clerk here with us, Danielle Ireland Imhoff.
Good evening, everyone. I have been bestowed the distinct honor of presenting this proclamation in honor of Estherina and her time here in Passaic County, specifically the Clerk's Office. In this fast-paced society that we currently live in, to have an individual dedicate as much time to one position is truly remarkable, and I'm sure her legacy will be forever remembered here in Passaic County, and specifically, again, in our Clerk's Office. So with that being said, allow me to introduce the Honorable Danielle Ireland Imhoff to share a few words.
Stephanie, come up, stand next to me. Good evening, everyone. I first want to congratulate the honorees tonight. This is not an easy moment. You don't cry. Stephanie has been with the County Clerk's Office for the past 22 years, six of those years with me, and one of the County Clerk's Office's primary and the oldest duty is recording any type of document that's involved with the purchase or sale or transfer of a property. That's what we call the Registry Division, Property Registry Division. And Stephanie is a huge part of that division's success, keeping the real estate industry in Passaic County running nonstop, even during the pandemic. Stephanie and our team, they kept that going. But Stephanie, beyond, you know, the technical part, just the joy you bring to the office, the professionalism you bring to the office, you're always so warm and just, you're a joy to see. Your smile lights up the room all the time, every day, every single day. So when you leave us at the end of May, it's going to be difficult. But thank you for your 22 years of service with the county.
It was my pleasure. It was my pleasure.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So now, allow me to memorialize this retirement and read this proclamation into the record. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic has a desire to recognize Estherina Karini as she retires from the Passaic County Clerk's Office Registry Division. Whereas Estherina Karini embarked on her professional journey as a keyboarding clerk on January 14, 2002, at the Passaic County Clerk's Office Registry Division, and whereas Estherina has held many positions within the Registry Division related to the recording and scanning of property transaction records, such as deeds, mortgages, property maps, et cetera. And Estherina helped keep property title searches safe during COVID-19 public health crisis by implementing and enforcing the social distancing and safety protocols in the county clerk's records vault, which is where property title searchers work when hired to perform a title search in Passaic County. This work consequently helped ensure the real estate industry in Passaic County did not shut down during the public health crisis. And whereas Estherina has contributed significantly to the department's success, especially in her outstanding customer service, to further the accessibility of property records for all Passaic County property owners. And whereas Estherina will be retiring on May 31, 2024, having worked through three county clerk administrations, the Honorable Karen Brown, the Honorable Kristen Carrato, and the current clerk, the Honorable Danielle Ireland Imhoff, marking the culmination of an impressive tenure of 22 years in dedicated service to Passaic County. So now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Estherina Karini for the significant contributions she had made to the County of Passaic and to the community. And let it be further proclaimed that this board wishes Estherina health and happiness on her retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much, everyone. This is really a beautiful thing. I feel so humble to be here. My coworkers are like more than my friends, and my family, my sister, my husband, and my daughter. They're here, so what a recognition. I can't say nothing. I'm just so happy, and I'm going to miss everyone. Thank you.
All right, Director, next we are celebrating Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month here, and I'm going to turn it over to you for our honorees and our festivities.
So good evening and welcome. On behalf of the entire board, this is a tradition that we've been carrying on annually now for 12 years, although whenever we say annual now, we need a little asterisk for 2020, unfortunately, thanks to the COVID pandemic. I do want to invite, before you even sit down, Fareed. We are going to begin this part of the program with a prayer, and as is tradition, Father Ryan is going to welcome our guest clergy person from the Bengali community here in the city of Paterson. So Father Ryan, and then Imhoff.
As you can tell, we're very flexible here, fluid. We would like to welcome with great esteem Imam Mohammed Abdul Manan, Imam of Masjid Adam. It's much easier if you have a name like Patrick Ryan.
Thank you, everyone. Peace be upon everyone. Celebrating AAPI Heritage Month is a chance to honor the experiences of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, and to celebrate the contributions that enrich our country year round. The month of May was chosen for AAPI Heritage Month for its historical significance for the AAPI community. I, as an Asian, feel honored and absolutely grateful to those who passed this resolution to celebrate and honor the AAPI community in the Passaic County. I am truly grateful to Commissioner John Bartlett for having me for this prayer. Before starting my prayer, I want to share only two verses from Holy Quran. Allah, a God who created the mankind and created the whole universe, he says, "O mankind, I have created you from a male and a female, and made you into nations and tribes, so that you would recognize each other." Actually, the most honorable, most noble among you, in the sight of God, is the most pious of you, is the most righteous of you. Another verse, indeed Allah orders justice and kindness, and to extend the helping hands to the relatives, and also he forbids all shameful deeds, evil, and rebellion. I'm going to start my prayer. A'udzubillahiminasyaitonirradjiim, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Allahu la ilaha illa huwal piyul qayyum, la taqudhu sinnatun wa la noom, lahu ma fi samawati wal ar, wa la ya'udhu hifzuhuma, wa huwa la aliyyu laajeeim. O Allah, we pray for guidance and strength. We pray for peace and prosperity. We pray for justice and human behavior. We want a peaceful life. We want beloved children, beloved parents, beloved spouse, and a happy family life. O Allah, we want your protection from violence, racism, and discrimination. We also ask your help for the healing of the wounds of those who hatred and violence. We ask for your blessing for those who continue to build connections between different cultures and communities. In this celebration month, May, may we learn from one another, grow and continue to celebrate the contribution of Asian decent people in this county, in this country. Before I conclude, I would like to congratulate all honorees of AAPI Heritage Month honorees. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, Imam. A beautiful start to a wonderful program. Asian-Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders are a group that comprise over 50 nationalities, and at such time as our slideshow is back up, you'll see some extraordinary examples of that from Passaic County and our nation. It reflects the spectrum of human experience, rich religious diversity, as we saw an example of cultures, languages, and cuisines that the rest of the world has literally crossed oceans and mountains to seek out for millennia. Immigration from Asia was largely banned for most of the 20th century, ending with the 1965 Immigration Reform Act that was signed right here in New Jersey, in Jersey City. President Lyndon Johnson, sitting with his back to the New York skyline, said, "This is an important thing, and this is the right thing to do, but it's really not going to change much." Well, little did he know, as all of you in this country know, today, one in nine New Jerseans is Asian-American, more than a million people in the Garden State alone. I don't know what President Johnson would have to say about that, but for us, it's something to celebrate. In New Jersey, we even have a state mandate now to teach about the AAPI experience in social studies and history classes in K through 12 schools. And for two years, the organization AAPI New Jersey has sponsored the Teaching Asian-American Stories Fellowship to provide the content needed to support that new mandate. And I'm glad that Professor Kyati Joshi, the creator of the task fellowship, is here with us tonight. And I did not say that just because I'm married to her. President Biden, last year, changed this month and its name to Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, not to force me to find Native Hawaiians here in Passaic County, but to recognize the issues affecting the indigenous populations of our 50th state. And that was important, because we need to acknowledge discrimination and injustice when it occurs. We need to own that part of our history, too, from the treatment of Native Hawaiians to the internment of innocent Japanese-Americans during World War II, to the post-9/11 backlash violence that targeted South Asian-Americans, not just Muslims, but Hindus, Sikhs, Christians, and others. Anti-Asian violence is an unfortunate and continuing part of the American epidemic of mass shootings, and one that continues, unfortunately, all the way to today. And that has led to amazing advocacy by so many segments of the AAPI, AANHPI, community, with organizations like Stop AAPI Hate, legal advocacy groups, and local organizations that are working hard to raise visibility and advocate for students and others. Passaic County is representative of the diversity and vitality of these populations, from Filipinos to Bangladeshis, to Indian and Pakistani immigrants and their children and grandchildren, to Korean-American and other East Asian communities, and the growing number of biracial and multiracial Asian-Americans like my son. So this year, we are celebrating creativity, courage, and community spirit. Today, you're going to meet an award-winning artist who lives in Clifton and whose work surrounds us here tonight. You're going to hear music from a talented pair of young siblings from Wayne, still in high school, but doing extraordinary Indian classical music. You're going to meet a family whose story from the Philippines to the city of Passaic has been one of courage, determination, and service. And you're going to discover the long history and service and community spirit exemplified by an organization that for decades has supported their fellow immigrants from the state of Gujarat in India, while giving back through philanthropy, community involvement, and advocacy to the communities and the people that they serve. And later, we can all celebrate downstairs with a meal from Jothi Indian Cuisine in Wayne that includes vegetarian and giant options, so everyone can enjoy. Thank you very much for coming. I want to begin, yep. I want to begin by introducing two constituents, Kea Patel and Deir Patel, sister and brother, who are going to perform on the sitar and the tabla. Their parents are proud parents are here recording them. Let's give our young performers another round of applause, as well as... And you don't reach that level of musical accomplishment without support from your parents. So Fennel and Lindsay Patel, thank you guys very much for bringing them out and sharing them with us. All right. So while they break down their musical setup, I want to ask Ilah Shah to join me here at the podium. Now, the Indian, Bangladeshi, Pakistani folks in the room will know what I'm saying here. I'm going to keep calling her Ilah Auntie, because Ilah is her first name and Auntie is how you address someone. Ilah Auntie, you're not just a constituent and extraordinary artist. Also, your late husband was one of my father-in-law's teachers at BJ Medical College in Amlevad years and years ago. So it's special to have you here. And everybody can not only enjoy Ilah Auntie standing here in front of you, but also her artwork on the screens behind us as I... As I read this proclamation. And I want to thank, by the way, our clerk Danielle Ireland Imhoff, who's also provided a certificate for each of our awardees today. Thank you very much, Danielle. So, whereas... You're going to hear that a lot today. Whereas the Month of May has been designated as Asian-American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made to the United States by immigrants from Asia and the Pacific Islands, Native Hawaiians, and their descendants. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Pasay deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Ilah Shah. And whereas, Ilah Auntie, I told you I'd do that. Ilah Auntie was born in Bombay, India, where she began painting at a very early age, learning Indian miniature painting techniques as well as Western styles. And whereas Ilah received her bachelor's degree in psychology and a diploma in fine arts from India, traveled around the world, and subsequently moved to the United States and received her Master of Art in Sculpture at MacLaure State University. And whereas Ilah Auntie has had numerous one-person shows in India and America, and her work has been exhibited in countless group shows in America and abroad in various prestigious galleries and museums. And whereas Ilah Auntie has held the position of chairperson to the National Association of Women Artists of New York and has curated shows for them and other arts institutions, including showing outdoor works at the MacLaure Museum grounds for sculptures and the Clifton Arts Center in New Jersey and the Chester Woods Museum in Massachusetts. And whereas a 2021 award-winning documentary about the artist called "Ilah: Breaking Boundaries" was featured in the New Jersey Film Festival, Flickers Rhode Island International, Chicago South Asian Film Festival, Ontario International Film Festival, Toronto International Film Festival, and many others. And her coffee table book, which shares the same title as the film, is her life story, accompanied by nearly 100 photographs of her work. Did you bring any for sale? Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Pasay County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Ilah Shah for the significant contributions she has made and the exemplary service and leadership she has unselfishly devoted to the County of Pasay and to the community and to the global arts. And be it further proclaimed that this Board of County Commissioners wishes Ilah Shah continued happiness and success.
Thank you so much for a beautiful introduction, and thank you all for coming. Thank you County Commissioners and all for honoring me. I'm really touched. It means a lot to me. Thank you so much, all. I think my art says all about it. I don't need to say anything. Thank you.
We're going to take a quick picture before we move on to the next. You want to give me a cane, too? And if you haven't yet, definitely check out Ilah Auntie's wonderful paintings on the easels over there and up here on our table. I want to introduce my colleague Sandy Lazara for the next presentation.
Hi, everyone. I have the honor of presenting this proclamation and also a certificate of recognition from our Pasay County Clerk Danielle Ireland Imhoff to the Cristobal family. Now, when I walked into here, I'm like, oh, this is really nice. But it turns out that Leila and I go way back, because we served on the Youth Services Commission together. And I know what great work you do as a police officer, but this, when I read this, your whole family does public service, like from law enforcement to nursing. I mean, it's just amazing. And I'm so proud to be able to read this today. I would like to actually invite your family on up while I read the proclamation, so please join me. Thank you. So on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, whereas the Month of May has been designated as an Asian-American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made to the United States by immigrants from Asia and the Pacific Islands, Native Hawaiians, and their descendants. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Pasay deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Sergeant Leila and Larry Cristobal and the Cristobal family. And whereas the Cristobal family, including Leila, Larry, and their three siblings immigrated to the United States from the Philippines in 1986. And whereas the Cristobal family raised five children in the city of Pasay, including eldest sister Lourdes Serena Badigan, who was a nurse for 34 years and is now a Director of Quality for Healthcare Utilization Review Corporation; middle sister Anna Liza Cristobal, who is a registered nurse first assistant at Clara Moss Hospital, Hackensack Meridian Hospital, and works at the New York Presbyterian Hospital specializing in cardiac thoracic surgery. Some family. Youngest sister Lenny Kostick, who is currently a preschool instructional coach for the Pasay School District, and two law enforcement professionals, Sergeant Leila Cristobal, who is currently a patrol supervisor for the city of Pasay, and Larry Cristobal, who retired as a patrol sergeant in January 2023. And whereas the Cristobal family has a long history of law enforcement, including Leila and Larry Cristobal's paternal and maternal grandfathers, serving as police officers in the Philippines, and paternal grandfather retiring as chief of police of Calcuken City, Philippines. And whereas the Cristobals' late father, Bayani Cristobal, was a police lieutenant in the Philippines and later served as a volunteer auxiliary police officer in the city of Pasay for many years while he worked at Pasay General Hospital and then Newark Beth Israel Hospital before retiring. And whereas Leila and Larry Cristobal, their mother Anita Cristobal was a teacher in the Philippines and worked as a nursing assistant and a clerk for 26 years at Pasay General Hospital, now known as St. Mary's General Hospital, and later became a paraprofessional for the Pasay Board of Education for another 10 years, and now fully enjoys retirement and taking care of her 10 grandchildren. Retirement, 10 grandchildren, and you're relaxing? Whereas Leila Cristobal graduated from Fairleigh Dickinson's University with a Bachelor of Arts in Business Administration and Management and began her law enforcement career in January 2000, sworn in as the first Filipino law enforcement officer in the state of New Jersey, rising through the ranks of the Pasay Police Department as a school resource officer, detective, and now sergeant and patrol supervisor. And whereas Larry Cristobal began his law enforcement career when he joined the New Jersey Department of Corrections in 1997 and was hired by the Pasay Police Department, graduating from the prestigious New Jersey Police Academy in 1998, and receiving training and certifications from the New Jersey State Police and the Federal Bureau of Investigation. Whereas Leila and Larry both grew up and graduated from Pasay schools, they are members of the New Jersey Asian-American Law Enforcement Officers Association, and their family are members of the Pasay Philippine Day Organizing Council, PDOC, that was founded in 1968 to celebrate the Filipino-American community of Pasay, New Jersey, and they help Filipino immigrants assimilate into the United States society. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Pasay County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Sergeants Leila and Larry Cristobal and the entire Cristobal family for the significant contributions that they have made and the exemplary service and leadership they have unselfishly devoted to the County of Pasay through their careers in law enforcement, healthcare, and education. So now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners that we wish the Cristobal family continued happiness and success. And I invite you...
Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank God for this opportunity and the recognition, and also to all the Commissioners who recognize the family of Cristobal. Thank you so much, sir and ma'am. And also, my good friends who are here and family, thank you for taking your time to come over here. Also, congratulations to Mr. Rana, who's a dearly friend of mine, and Ms. Eli, thank you so much. Congratulations. And thank you, everyone, for coming.
I didn't want to say the same thing, but I think it's important to let everybody know that we truly greatly appreciate everyone being here, and to all the Commissioners. It's truly an honor to be here, standing in front of you, to take this beautiful recognition. And I know it doesn't come easy for everyone, and we're really blessed to be the recipient of this. It could have been given to any Filipinos, but just the fact that it was provided to the Cristobal family is really, truly an honor. And I see a lot of familiar faces in here. God bless you all. Thank you. Family and friends, we love you.
When we talk about Asian Pacific American families and legacies, that's exactly the kind of thing we're talking about. I want to invite my colleague Pat LaFleur up to present the final of our three recognitions this evening.
Good evening, everyone. It is my great pleasure to present this proclamation for Rana Samaj USA Incorporated. Whereas the month of May has been designated as Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Come on up. I thought you knew the cue, man. Whereas the month of May has been designated as Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month in recognition of the outstanding achievements and the contributions made to the United States by immigrants from Asia and the Pacific Islands, Native Hawaiians and their descendants, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Rana Samaj USA Incorporated. And Rana Samaj USA was founded on May 6, 1995, in Passaic, New Jersey, with only five members who were engineers that migrated from India and has today grown to include more than 5,000 people from the community in Passaic and Clifton. Amazing. And whereas, Rana Samaj USA celebrates Indian festivals like Diwali, Holi, India Independence Day, and Navarti. Navarti, thank you. And an annual community picnic, and also supports trips to Atlantic City, Canada, Europe, Las Vegas, and to Shardam Yatra.
Shardam Yatra.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
You're coming this year.
I'm coming. In India, so that all the society members can come together and keep Samaj united. Whereas President Raj Rana and his executive committee, as well as many of its trustee members involved in local politics and community service, included in fundraising, volunteering in elections, supporting the community food pantries and health fairs, as well as helping their members with family disputes, finding jobs, accessing medical insurance and medical checkups, free medicine, funeral services, and educational scholarships. Whereas Rana Samaj USA promotes a positive culture in the Indian American community and beyond by giving to their youth the best education, helping to keep their families together, keeping kids away from drugs, alcohol, and violence. And where Raj Samaj, Rana Samaj USA members are currently serving in the White House, the Attorney General's Office, and Governor Murphy's administration. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Rana Samaj USA for the significant contributions they have made and the exemplary service and leadership that they have unselfishly devoted to the county of Passaic and to their community. Be further proclaimed that this Board of County Commissioners wishes all the members of Rana Samaj USA continued happiness, success, and good health.
Thank you.
Who's going to speak?
I'm going to speak.
Okay, get in here.
My name is Raj Rana. I am the president of Rana Samaj. And so on behalf of Anta Rana Samaj, I want to thank especially our Commissioner John Bartlett. We call him as a Jamai Raja, as a son-in-law, because he is married to one of our sisters, Kathy Josie. Thank you, Commissioner, for inviting us. And especially for Rana Samaj, this is one of the biggest achievement in the history of Rana Samaj. In last 30 years, this is the first time we ever been awarded the certificate of proclamation. So thank you, all commissioners. Thank you for inviting us, and God bless you.
Thank you. The president says all. On behalf of all the Rana Samaj and all the Indian American community living in Passaic County, there are about over 15,000 Indian Americans living in Passaic County. And we all are thankful today to Director John Bartlett and all the commissioners sitting here. We thank you very much on behalf of the whole community. Thank you. Thank you. It was a little late, but at least we got something. Thank you.
No, no, I'm right behind you. Couldn't have been any better. Oh, you got the money shot. There comes the big guy. Thank you, guys. Good seeing you. Always. Yeah, good, good. Get in there.
As we bring this to a close, I want to acknowledge how many members of the Asian Pacific American community there are as part of our Passaic County team. Mookesh Pandya, formerly of the Passaic County Board of Social Services, Sajil Parmar from the Board of Social Services, Nitin Shukla, who's here with us, former commissioner of the Passaic County Community College, Lupendra Gudvi, who serves on our Passaic County Open Space Advisory Committee. Lupendraji, thank you very much for being here. Two of our department heads, RT Kakar and Kristi Mahabir, as well as thank you very much Councilman-at-Large Fariduddin from the City of Patterson for joining us. And thank you again, Imam, for blessing us with some wisdom and prayer at the very beginning of our program. So this is the best part. This is the part where you get to go eat. Please join us downstairs. As I say, they're vegetarian and giant option, so everyone is able to eat. Thank you again to our young musicians and their family for being part of today. And we'll see you all next May. We're going to get back to our business meeting. All right. So we encourage everyone to go downstairs and continue taking pictures down there under the flag. Thank you all very much. Anything else, Pat?
Yeah, Director, I just want to note, a very nice job on that ceremony. A couple of things. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. This past Friday, the Department of Human Services, in partnership with the Officer Recovery in the Sheriff's Department and 25 mental health providers, had a mental health awareness event in our Courthouse Plaza with over 200 residents who attended. The department also released its 2023 Needs Assessment Report by William Patterson University, looking at unaddressed youth mental health needs in Passaic County. In response to the results of the study, the Youth Mental Health Demonstration Project, RFP, was released to seek organization to provide immediate mental health assessment, short-term treatment, and referrals for children and youth in the county. The board did award to two nonprofit agencies in the county that are going to start addressing these important mental health needs. And I would also note that this past week at Hinchcliffe Stadium, the Lakeland Lancers won their fifth county championship in baseball. So congratulations to the Lancers. I was a part of the 2003 championship team, so I'm very proud of my alma mater. That's it, Director.
That's great. Thank you, man. So that brings us to county commissioner reports. I feel like there was something I want to say, but I'm not going to come up with it. Just thank everyone for being part of today's program. I did want to acknowledge at slightly greater length Peter Eglor of Clifton, who passed last week. Peter sat on this dais for a number of years as a freeholder, back when that was our title. He also served on this Clifton City Council as an assemblyman representing the 34th Legislative District down in Trenton. He was also a real champion of his Ukrainian community and of the many other minority ethnic and religious communities in our county. It was actually Peter, under his leadership, that we began doing our annual Ramadan crescent lighting here in Passaic County. So he was a strong advocate of his own Ukrainian community, which was something very powerful and important over this past decade, as Ukraine has suffered repeated attacks and now an all-out war by Russia against it. But also that Peter was, as I think many of us try to be, someone who reaches out and connects with all the communities that make Passaic County a terrific place. We join the Eglor family and everyone in Clifton in mourning Peter. So that's what I have to say. Deputy Director?
On Saturday, after many years of planning, we were able to dedicate the Vietnam Veterans' Memorial Wall up in Wayne at the Public Safety Academy. We had over 400 people probably that were there. But most importantly is the effort that everyone put in to making that day a success for our veterans. And we have several departments here within Passaic County. And I see some of our department heads here, like Shirley and, I don't know if Jonathan Orange, I think they are, John, Steve Orsini, Darrell, Kenny, Lou. I mean, there's just, I could go on and on, but we are so grateful that you made that day so special for our veterans. And I'm still getting messages about how touched they were by everything. So I just actually want to thank everyone who was a part of the committees and all the work that was done, that your work did not go unnoticed. And we are so, so, so happy with the results of your hard work. And I thank you very much for that. On behalf of the entire Board of County Commissioners, I talk. Thank you.
Commissioner Chris?
Thank you, Director. I just have, I want to just take this opportunity to congratulate all of our graduates, as we are in commencement month here. We have graduates from Montclair State University, William Patterson, and this Thursday will be our own community college commencement. And so I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate all of those Passaic County residents that have, you know, reached that level in their education, and hopefully they'll get out there and get into the workforce, contribute back to our communities, and maybe one day come back and be a part of our own, you know, government and giving back to their hometowns. So I just wanted to do that. Thank you.
Commissioner Duffy?
Good evening, everyone. Just first with Peter Eglor. Pat and I served with him. He was a caring guy. He worked very hard, always with a smile, always had a moment for you. And so may he rest in peace. He made a big hit on Passaic County. I want to also kudos to Sandin Group and the whole group here, the freeholders, the commissioners, but more importantly, the staff who make us look so good. They really do. I mean, no. So kudos to them as well. Other than that, I wish when it's summer, it's summer, Ray, it's 90 degrees out there. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Terry. Nick, Commissioner Gallagher?
Director, I have nothing out of this time. Just enjoy your weekend.
I have 39 resolutions for my colleague's review, but I'd like to point out three of them. Resolution 11 is a resolution reappointing Steve Orsini as a superintendent of Buildings and Grounds for the County of Passaic. I've been here, Terry and I have been here for 20 years. And I can say unequivocally that Steve is the best superintendent we've had in Buildings and Grounds, and we're lucky to have you there. Thank you. And resolution number 20 and 21 is a resolution scheduling a public hearing on June 25, 2024, to receive public comment on the adoption of the project labor agreement for the Passaic County Public Works contract over $5 million. And number 21 is a resolution scheduling a public hearing on June 25 to receive public comments on the adoption of a responsible contractor and subcontractor policy for the county of Passaic Public Works contracts over $5 million. I just want to take this opportunity to acknowledge our administrator, Matthew, and our county council, Nadej, who put together, worked very hard to put together these two resolutions that are so important to many of our folks in labor. And I'm, again, asking my colleagues for their support on these resolutions. That's all I have, Director.
Thank you very much, Pat. And thank you for particularly mentioning items number 20 and 21 on the content agenda. I agree. It's time to make those adoptions. It is, of course, a process we have to go through with a public hearing in June because this is a change in our policy and how we'll be doing contracting and evaluating vendors on a going-forward basis, and that's an important step. I want to thank not only the team here that made it happen, but also our partners in labor who worked with us, gave us good advice, and we're thankful for the opportunity who worked with us, gave us good advice, and we're thankful for the opportunity to move forward in a way that's positive for our working folks in the labor unions that represent everybody here in Passaic County. So with that, I believe I can call for a vote to open the oral portion of the meeting.
I'll move it.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett? Yes. Do any Commissioners want any items removed from the consent agenda and voted separately? Okay, and counsel, am I correct, there's no need for executive session and no late starters? With that, I can take a motion to adopt our consent agenda.
I'll move it.
L-1 through L-85, movement seconded by Lazara and Duffy. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett? Yes. For those of you following along in the agenda, we're almost reached the buffet stage, but first, new business, second on the personnel.
Move personnel?
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett? Yes. For those of you following along in the agenda, we're almost reached the buffet stage, but first, new business, second on the personnel.
Move personnel?
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett? Yes, and the bills?
Move the bills?
A second? Pay the bills.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director Bartlett? Yes. Thank everyone again for being here. Appreciate seeing faces in the room who are out and concerned about the work that we're doing. I'm glad that we had a great crowd for Asian Pacific American, Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. So thank you all very much, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, go home.